Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners regular Wednesday Board Session. We have a huge audience here today. We have lots of, couple of fun things to do. Today is April 9th, Wednesday, and we are meeting here in the Commissioners Boardroom at 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Is this going to be our last time here? When do we get to move?
I'm not sure.
One more. So, we begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as I said, we have a couple of, excuse me, presentations this morning, some awards, so it's good to see so many people here. So, thank you all for coming. The first on the agenda this morning is the Marion County Fair Report. Excuse me. And we have Chantel. But over here, okay, come on up. Actually, you have a whole team with you, so that's good. So, as you come up, introduce yourselves, please.
Yeah, the whole team can come up if you want.
Yes, we can move chairs over there. You can all come up together. Good morning.
We are all very excited to be here this morning. We are Open Door Ideas. We're seven MBA's first-year students at Willamette University at the Graduate School Atkinson, the Graduate School of Management. Our team is comprised of Amal Alkatani, Maha Shanti, Kyle Derby, Udaya Potabatula, Chantal Berrio, and presenting for you this morning will be Ryan Henses and myself, Catherine Porras. So, for, to begin with, we wanted to share with you guys our PACE, PACE is a class that we have to take as first year. We become consultants for, in this case, for the Marion County Fair. Our job was to come in and understand what our clients' needs were and how to best address them. For us, it was very important to understand treatment, which was to promote the agricultural and cultural heritage of Marion County, and also to have the active participation of its citizens throughout. Also for us was to understand the current situation of the Marion County Fair within Marion County and even within the bigger scope of the state of Oregon. Many of us are new to the area, so we quickly discovered that Marion County is one, if not the top biggest agricultural producers of the entire state of Oregon. It also hosts the city of Salem, which is our state capital. So, it's a very strategic and very important location within the Oregon State. However, the Marion County Fair has experienced a plateau in attendance in recent years, and it is also the only one out of the 36 county fairs that does not have its own fairgrounds. This presents some challenges, which leads us into what we've worked on. We worked on two tasks. One was to increase the attendance to the Marion County Fair, and the second one was to come up with an optimized, proposed layout to assist our clients in their search of acquiring a permanent fairgrounds for their county. In terms of our scope of work, in terms of increasing attendance, we came up with a plan of a three-step plan. One was to refresh an identity, to make it popular and to have it be receptive by our Marion County residents and beyond, also to conduct research in popular fair activities, and to also provide tools for data gathering so that our client can best capture the feedback of their attendees and improve operations of the fair for subsequent years. The way how we went about doing this research, we conducted semi-structured interviews, many, many of them, also conducted literature review as well as online surveys. You could see on the slide behind us, or to my right, the stakeholders, the people that we spoke to. The main two were the Marion County Fair Board, as well as the Marion County Fair Foundation, which is a sister organization, the nonprofit, that is closely linked with Marion County, and they both worked together to put on this annual event. So, the first thing, the first step was our refresh identity, and this was with the purpose of increasing attendance. We led a three-word association work exercise, and with both boards, we came up with the local social fund. And local was so important to have because it is, again, promoting the heritage of Marion County. We want to show the pride that we have in Marion County. Social because it's a community gathering event, but more importantly, a community-building event. And of course, fun had to be there because it's a county fair, and everybody's looking forward to that weekend where you could spend time with your family, friends, and neighbors. The second step in our plan was to conduct, through our interviews, to figure out which were the popular activities, the activities that brought the largest amount of crowds to the fair. There were three groups, three groups that represent growing demographics within the state of Oregon. Those would be teenagers, families with young children, and as well as Latinos. For each of these subgroups, we compiled lists, and we came with three of those to share with you. For the teen population would be the Battle of the Bands. This was an activity that was very popular, and it's basically two bands get on stage trying to compete to get the audience approval and love. Also, the kids-free zone, that was very popular among families, and that's basically an area allocated within the fair where it has a wide variety of activities that are free of cost to the families. And this is, this brings large crowds to the fair, and once they're in the fair, they get to explore other activities. And an activity that is very popular within Latinos will be, for example, bringing Latino-focused events. So, if you include a Latino musical band, maybe partner up with a Latino radio station within the community, that will bring, that has been successful in bringing large crowds as well. And these activities have been conducted within the Marion County, as well as other county fairs that have proven to be successful. And now, my partner Ryan will continue to talk about the activities that could be incorporated in future fairs.
Thank you, Cap. As Cap mentioned, we were researching many other successful county fairs and state fairs across the United States, and we compiled a list of activities that they found were large draws and high contributors to the success and enjoyment of their fairs. We then, as a group, went through this list of potential new ideas and vetted them against their fit with the Marion County Fair's specific draw towards agriculture and teaching. We then took the top 11 of these activities, and we marketed them through an online survey, through the Survey Monkey capacity. We then sent this online survey link to the entire Marion County Fair email list. Additionally, we purchased a Facebook ad and linked it to the Marion County Fair's Facebook page to help draw in more community attendance. We received over 250 responses, and out of the 11 that we put out initially, the top four out of those responses to our survey were a magic show, a paintball arena, pony rides, and a go-kart track. We then took those top four, and we went online, and we researched the costs and the capacity for them to be integrated into the Marion County Fair. What we found unfortunately is that the paintball arena and go-kart track, although there was a high request rate for this, we could not find vendors that are capable of coming in and in a small, short notice, or small scope arrangement, set up something like this for the Marion County Fair. However, we did find multiple vendors for both the free pony rides and the magic show. Unfortunately, these both come in as fairly low-dollar investments for the Marion County Fair to incorporate. One of the goals that we had coming into this is that we wanted to provide the Marion County Fair with a set of tools which will allow them to be effective and powerful going forward, to make sure that the fair remains a growing, it does not get stagnant. The Marion County Fair has traditionally utilized a paper exit poll, so that day attendees come in, and then as they're leaving, they're given an opportunity to provide their feedback to the Marion County Fair. This is a great idea, and this feedback is necessary. However, we came up with three suggestions to improve the data gathering process going forward. The first is to add in the capacity of incentivizing the feedback. The Marion County Fair has a strong corporate support from local businesses in the area, and we feel that if a large pool of low-dollar contributions could be amassed, it could then be used as a prize structure or a individual reward structure to essentially pay the participants of the survey for their feedback. The second thing is that we feel that the feedback should have the capacity to be an Espanol también, in Spanish as well. Cap mentioned that one of the large, growing demographics is the Latino community, and best marketing practices indicate that if you can market in a native language, you will receive a higher return rate. Finally, we have developed the QR code-assisted data gathering survey. What a QR code is, if anyone is unaware, is it's a strange-looking schematic behind us here. It is a scannable code that is individual, like a barcode, and with a smartphone with a scanning application, anybody can scan this code here, and it takes them instantly to an online survey, which is a mirror of the traditional paper survey. What this allows is for the Marion County Fair to get real-time feedback from participants while they're at the fair, or it allows them to, at any point, scan any documentation associated with the Marion County Fair that has this QR code incorporated in it, and then at that point, they can weigh in and suggest what could be improved, they could give feedback as to what they liked. And this will do a great step in bringing the feedback and community involvement into the social media age. With this exit poll, that exits our work for the Marion County Fair, and I'd like to speak briefly on the work that we did for the Marion County Fair Foundation. The Marion County Fair Foundation is a supportive nonprofit. Its mission statement is to support youth programs and enhance the fair for future generations. Primarily, the Marion County Fair Foundation is involved in the 4H and the agricultural side of the Marion County Fair. They are acutely aware that holding the Marion County Fair at the Oregon State Fairgrounds is not optimal. At 185 acres, the Oregon State Fairgrounds is vastly oversized for the needs of the Marion County Fair, and as we spoke with the various stakeholders, we found that having a fairground as large as it is is actually causing some confusion and some headaches to both the participants and the attendees. What we did is we worked with the stakeholders, primarily the 4H, and we spoke to all the other successful county fairs in the area, and we asked them what in terms of the layout and the sizing contributed to their success rates. We then put together an optimized and right-sized proposed layout for the Marion County Fair Foundation to keep in mind as they begin evaluating potential new properties. I'd like to take you on a very quick virtual tour here of what we feel would be the right size and the right layout for the Marion County Fair going forward. The top-left quadrant here is primarily for the 4H and the agricultural side. This includes two different horse stables, a large livestock area, and then a smaller animal area for the rabbits and the goats and the cute things. This is surrounded by a centralized courtyard, and, oh, we've moved on. K here is a centralized courtyard. One of the things that Melanie Mitkin explained to us is that trying to attend all of the 4H activities at the Oregon State Fair involves a lot of running. By putting all of the 4H activities, such as a livestock pen and two different show areas, around a centralized location, not only does it bring together the focus of the agriculture into one specific area, but it provides a very easy logistical bridge to making sure that all of this is done efficiently and with the least amount of hassle. Moving on to the right quadrant here, these are two areas which is where you're going to find the kids. This is where you have the games, and this is where you have the carnival. Also, a lot of restrooms. It's also right next to our entrance for the day attendees, so coming in right off the bat, they've got the music, they've got the activities. Here we have a food court that we set up. It's very similar to how the Oregon State Fair's food court is set up, where you have a bracket of food vendors surrounding a centralized eating area. We recommend having a tent set up, as it does get fairly hot. However, once again, high emphasis on bathrooms. Here we've got a large open grass area. This could be used for outdoor events, horse events, or simply community events. And we have a large building, similar to the Cascade Building at the Oregon State Fair. One of the things that the Marion County Fair Foundation emphasized with us is that they need this to not simply be a fairground for the Marion County Fair. They want an activity area, or a fairground that can be an activity area for the local community to take advantage of, as well as providing revenue in the duration that the Marion County Fair is not in attendance. When we looked at the Oregon State Fairgrounds and we spoke with MG, we found that the Cascade Building is probably the best example of a high-capacity flex building, as is something that the Marion County Fair Foundation would like to be able to utilize to boost the community involvement. Last, we have a 5,000-seater amphitheater here. This is very similar to the Oregon State Fairgrounds amphitheater. However, since we have an opportunity to design this with the understanding there's going to be a large participation of animals involved, we've set it up so that the noise is going to be channeled away from the fairgrounds proper, and specifically away from the animal pens. Additionally, this would help the Marion County Fair, because they have a tradition of live music, and it would provide a great opportunity for the local community to have involvement and provide revenue for the Marion County Fair Foundation going forward. To sum up, our recommendation is 50 acres initial purchase. Of this, 30 acres would be for the fairgrounds proper, 10 would be initially allocated to RV parking. A lot of the 4H attendees do need larger, oversized parking. And then there would be another 10 acres specifically for day attendee parking to the fair. I'd like to stress the emphasis on the 4H centralized courtyard, the community flex building, and the 5,000-seater amphitheater, because these are all extremely valuable additions that came to us through the recommendations of our stakeholders. I would like to thank Commissioner Carlson and the Marion County Fair Board, and I would like to thank Bob and Sarah Zanlinski and the Marion County Fair Foundation for all of their assistance with us on this project. We'd like to take this opportunity for any questions.
Comments, I'm curious. Yes.
So, first of all, let me say thank you for a job well done. You have really worked hard on this. This is a culmination of a whole school year's worth of work. I'm trying to remember when we met. It was either late August or early September when we got together out at Creekside with a whole room full of Willamette University MBA students, and each sat at tables and introduced the idea of the Marion County Fair. And I don't know that county fairs are necessarily in the tradition of many of you that are on this team, a few. So, this is a great work that you have done. You're doing this presentation on Friday, right? And you're limited to 10 minutes on Friday, is that correct? So, this was kind of a trial run for them, and I know they had extra information to give us here, so we appreciated that. The other thing that I wanted to mention, couple things. One is that in that list of activities, line dancing was one of the options, and I know you were all disappointed that line dancing didn't come out higher because you like to do line dancing, so I thought that was a fun thing. I really have been pushing the pony ride, so I was excited that that made it into the top four. I also wanted to acknowledge that, and Bob, your title is, are you the president of the board, the chair of the board? Chairman of the board of the Marion County Fair Foundation, and I know that looking for a site for the fair has been a dream of Bob's for some time, and so this is, these recommendations are going to give the Fair Foundation some, some good things to think about as they move forward on that particular endeavor. And lastly, I do want to thank Tammy Getch for the work that the department has done. She made available all kinds of documents and email addresses, and the Survey Monkeys sent it out to that large list that they have for the department, and I know that that was really critical for the data gathering that was done for this project. So, we'll look forward to trying to do as many of these as we can in the fair that's coming up just in a few months, but I think some of them will take us a little bit longer to integrate into the fair as we move forward. But just appreciate all the work that you have done.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again. I've taken it out of my binder. I want to be able to review this a little more closely. It was a fantastic presentation and great ideas, and really, really gets me excited about the future of the fair. Now, every year, there are some changes and improvements. This would be a major leap to a whole new kind of fair and reaching a whole new market. So, thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for being here.
And I will see you all on Friday, right?
Where's their, talk a little bit about what they're going to do.
I think it's Board Hall, is that right?
Yes.
Be presenting.
Okay, would you want to tell a little bit about what you're going to do on Friday?
Yes, dude, give us a little background. I know you didn't do all of this work just to come and see us today.
So, on Friday, we have for the first year's competition. So, it's about 100 of us, 85 students, and we've all broken down into seven group, seven member groups, and we're going to be presenting our final presentations, and it's a competition to see who gets to win the big prize, which I'm not sure what it is. Do we go in the Hall of Fame? I think we should. And it will be, we'll be presenting at 2:45 at 4 Building, which is a new building right at Willamette University. Thank you.
Good. Good luck. Good luck. Okay, so, next on our agenda is the annual volunteer report and awards. Kathy Crocker.
Getting some technical help here really quick. Yeah. Uh, no. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, excuse me, a little technical difficulty. Thank you, Angelique. Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, everybody. Today is a celebration. Last week, with your help, we proclaimed April 6th through 13th as Volunteer Week in Marion County. It also coincides with National Volunteer Week. I am Kathy Crocker. I'm the Volunteer Services Coordinator for Marion County. I have the best job in the whole county. I get to meet and work with all kinds of wonderful staff that help and work with our volunteers, our volunteers who give back their time and talents and energy and humor, provide relief to our staff, and just do a wonderful job for Marion County. So, today I get the opportunity to share with you the results from 2013 in summary of the volunteer report. So, this was celebrating people in action last week. So, last week, we also sent out, and these should be hitting the mailboxes, with your help, we created this postcard and a cute little world Post-it notes that said, "You mean the world to us," and thanked them with your signatures and thank you. So, that should be hitting the mailboxes probably today. So, I ask people, why do you want to volunteer? What's in it for you? You know, and some people, it's that they need to give back for community service, perhaps. For some people, it's internships, and they need the credit class for, to graduate. Some, in this, in this time of unemployment, need to keep their skills honed and want to keep current and involved in the workforce, and so, but most really just want to give back and make their community a better place. So, today, we're going to be taking a look at some of the things in the report that kind of were highlights, and we included some pictures. So, before you is a summary of that report, and you notice that not all departments are represented with volunteer hours, pages four and five of that report. And for those of you that don't have a copy of this, there are extras out on the table, but it will also be on my website, and you can access that. But it is my goal to eventually get all departments with volunteers. So, during 2013, we had 3,380 volunteers that contributed 143,528 hours to the county. That would have been the work equivalent to 72 full-time volunteers or full-time employees. So, what's significant about that number is that if we would have had to have paid for those services in that time performed, it would have valued at over $3 million. So, that's significant, and it really contributes to the work that our county can do. I actually do feel that some of those numbers are less than they should be, because I think in a lot of cases, we have a lot of boards and committees, and we may just count the hours that they're in their meetings and such, but there's so much that goes behind the scenes that I think we don't capture, and, you know, the preparation of agendas and all of the back work that needs to happen to get for a successful committee. So, Marion County does have 32 advisory boards and committees that do help us make informed So, customer service is a big deal for our county. John Latimer always promotes the expect excellence, and I really like that, and we do trainings for that in our, in our new volunteer orientation. And I know that the staff that work with volunteers do expect excellence on the job because they are representing the county. So, and a lot of times, they're the faces that the public sees. So, in this case, these are master gardeners that are working at OSU Extension, helping a client. Volunteers do help promote safety and improve safety throughout the community. In this picture, we have the cadets that provide assistance at local events and what have you. And again, look at how nicely they're representing the county and, you know, showing these little kids that, that these police officers are good people and that they're there for them. So, I think that's really good. And a lot of times, I do get questions about, what can we, what can my youth do? You know, how can I make a positive, or have them contribute positively within Marion County? Is there a place for them? And the Cadet Program is a special program that does allow for youth 14 and 1/2 to 21, and it's a great program. These youth really, they go through quite a lot of training, and they go through an eight-week academy, and do provide a lot of public service events. So, in, in, within the Cadet Program, this was one that I wanted to highlight because they provided over 5,614 hours of service in 2013, and really represent us well. So, this is a photo here of our, of some volunteers that are within the Marion County Dog Shelter. They're out in the community all the time with smiles on their faces and with those lovable dogs, and right next to them. lovable dogs and right next to them, and really showing the community what we do. Really without the dedication of these volunteers, 400 dogs would not have been adopted out, and over 700 would not have been reunited with their families. So that's a big, that's a big number. Our dog shelter does a lot of great work, helping to socialize these animals so that they can be adopted out. So congratulations, Marion County Dog Shelter staff. So this is an example of some volunteers having fun. Does that look like fun to you? We've got a carrot and some peas. And these are health educator volunteers that are out in the community, helping promote healthy choices. So I think that that was fun. Marion County volunteers help us accomplish our goals and assist with local events. In this picture, you'll see our emergency medical reserves. They were asked this past year to help provide any medical assistance to, at the Powerland Antique, Antique Powerland Steam-Up Event. And so that was good training and time for them to be part of the public and go through those exercises. The District Attorney Victim Assistance Program always has impressed me. Kathy Beach and that staff do an amazing job. They have over 48 hours of training and really are, with victims, they're being their advocates and standing alongside them at a very vulnerable and tough time in their lives. So they're truly providing amazing, outstanding customer service when our residents need So volunteer internships really can be a win-win, and we really try to make good placements for those. And this on-the-job training really helps our volunteers, our interns, go on and be successful in their future careers. So really, I truly thank those staff that work with interns. It's really a benefit to these students, help prepare our future workforce. So in these photos, you'll see our WIC department group that's out in the county and community, helping with, I think that was the, one of the resource fairs throughout the community this year. And then the other is a wellness intern that helped Beth Hock with our wellness program, and he's assisted tremendously in providing programs that help keep our Marion County staff well. So emergency volunteers, we have community emergency response teams throughout the community. In this picture, you're seeing them go through a training or operation where they prepare for disaster response in case the big one hits. We have a lot of people in our community that were, are going to be prepared and ready to step up with our emergent volunteer center. So as part of my job, and I get to help thank and recognize volunteers throughout the year, but I really appreciate it when different departments also provide their thank yous. I can't be there on a day-to-day basis, but I try to help support the staff that do. And so I appreciate folks like this. This was last year, I guess Community Services did a reading-for-all thank you that recognized the people that helped with their book drives. So please go and see my annual report. All of the numbers you can see there. I did a description, even if departments didn't have volunteers in their departments, that I did a description of what that department entails. And so I want to start next with some key staff. I started a volunteer recognition for staff members that helped, that really exemplified good work with volunteers. I did that last year, and I'd like to continue that again today. I have, I'd like to recognize Helen Laura, although I didn't see her, Sonia Pulvers, and Doc Nelson, if you could please come forward.
Do I need a microphone?
Is it wireless?
Oh, thank you. Oh, great, thank you. So these staff have really been exemplary in their efforts with our volunteers and have really taken their support of our volunteers to the next level. And so I wanted to say a huge thank you to them, because without their work, we wouldn't be as successful. So Sonia Pulvers, she is amazing at the dog shelter. How many volunteers do you have out there?
Over, I want to say over 400. It's a lot.
It's amazing. And I don't know if you've ever been out there, but I don't think I could be a volunteer there, because I'd want to take them all home. They're just all so cute. But you do a wonderful job. She's wonderful at keeping an accurate database, keeping the volunteers engaged and excited to be there. So thank you, Sonia. And I created this cute little lunch bag that they each get. It says, "Our volunteers are cool." Helen Laura is not here, but I'd like to just say a few words. She is with Community or Consumer Care Partnership, and she also does a really wonderful job in helping mentor and advocate for her program and for the challenged clients that they work with. She does a great job at training and really supports her staff. So I wanted to just give a quick thank you to Helen. And finally, we have a voice and a face here that you all might recognize. This gentleman had been, gosh, you were on the job with Marion County Sheriff's Office as volunteer coordinator since 2007.
Oh, seven.
He grew that program, helped set up the disabled parking program, the Marine Patrol, variety of different programs where people were super engaged, really felt thanked and appreciated. And we couldn't have done it without you, Doc. We miss you. Are you enjoying retirement? Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to the commissioners, and we will be having some, oh. Want to do a picture?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, you want me to go, Sean?
Right there, you're fine.
One more.
Where's the paparazzi?
Thank you.
We'll be bringing up certificates.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kathy. Kathy does a great job, so we appreciate her, because she corrals all these volunteers and points them in the right direction and allows us to come here today and make these wonderful recognitions. So let me begin. Each spring during National Volunteer Week, the county recognizes volunteers for service during the previous year. Department staff nominate volunteers from county programs, and a nonpartial selection committee reviews and scores the nominations. We would like to thank this year's selection committee, Gretchen Jordan, Oregon Office of the Long-Term Care Ombudsman, Michelle Furman, Shangri-La Corporation, and Cheryl Lynn Bechtel, Union Gospel Mission Salem. Special recognition goes to all nominees. All of the nominations were impressive. Today, we'd like to thank and recognize some outstanding individuals who've given significant contributions to Marion County through their service. So Commissioner Carlson and I are going to back and forth here, and go ahead and begin.
So we were trying to figure out how to pronounce, is it Ryan?
Ryan.
Ryan, it is Ryan, okay. The Youth Volunteer Award was developed to recognize volunteer accomplishments of young people 24 years and under in county programs and departments. The award is intended to highlight an individual's contribution. The winner of the Youth Volunteer Award is Ryan Ganyard. Ryan isn't able to join us today, but we will tell you about her accomplishments. Ryan has been a volunteer, is at Marion County Business Services Department, originally assigned to help with volunteer and recruitment data entry. Her assignments were always perfectly executed and speedily finished. Ryan assisted with a very large scanning project for human resources and benefits, which needed to be finished before the move back to Courthouse Square. She eagerly jumped in to assist with the project and has tirelessly scanned hundreds of documents for us. This has saved Marion County many hours of time and dollars that would have been spent on a moving crew. The Recruitment, Volunteer Data, and Benefits Divisions of Business Services have all been impacted by her tireless work. Staff believes she is a rare find and want to recognize her extraordinary skills and
The Advisory Board Volunteer of the Year Award is to recognize an individual who has made significant contributions to a Marion County Advisory Board. Through this award, an individual volunteer is recognized for service or leadership, or an ongoing commitment to an advisory board for work on a one-time special task force or ad hoc committee. So I'd like Bonnie Sullivan to come forward. Bonnie Sullivan was appointed to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, known as SWAMAC, in August 2006. Prior to being appointed, Bonnie was a regular attendee of the meetings as an interested citizen for many years. Bonnie has been an advocate for ensuring that our advisory members are trained in public meetings rules and group process ethics, and that group bylaws are being followed. She led the development of a new member manual for the SWAMAC that has been used as a template by other groups. Bonnie also serves on some other subcommittees for the council, including the membership and bylaw groups. Bonnie has been extremely dedicated to working with SWAMAC to discuss solid waste issues and make recommendations for program improvements to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much, Bonnie, for all your work.
Did you get the picture?
Yes, I did.
I have pictures. So this is the Program or Division Award. This award is intended for those volunteers who display dedication and exemplary accomplishments within the division or program in which they volunteer. Volunteers in this category are recognized for their contribution to the customers or clientele the program serves and the betterment of the community. We'd like to recognize a nominee for honorable mention in this category first. Will Pamela Blake please come forward? Pamela came to the dog shelter to strengthen her administration skills through the Shangri-La Work Experience Program. She completed the program and was able to move forward in seeking out a career within the administration field in our community. Pamela exemplified Marion County's customer service policy and became a positive part of the team at the shelter. She spends two days a week helping our staff at the front counter with the phones, walk-in customers, and a variety of special tasks. Pamela makes our customers feel important, valued, and respected. For every customer that leaves our dog shelter with a positive experience, there is the potential of additional customers that will enter our doors to look for their next new four-legged family member. Thank you, Pamela.
So we want to be sure that everyone who comes up to get an award, wait a moment so we can get your photo that will be your lasting memory. This year's recipient of the Outstanding Volunteer Program or Division Award is Judy Skinner. Judy is not able to join us today. Judy has been volunteering for Marion County for approximately 15 years. Judy has a passion for and deep understanding of environmental services, waste reduction, and recycling efforts. She has taken the Master Recycler class and went far beyond the required 30 hours of volunteer payback, completing at least 300 hours over the years. She currently volunteers on the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, where she applies the knowledge she has gained over the years to help make our programs successful. Judy has helped at household hazardous waste collection events, compost or sale days, at numerous community events, and helped various local businesses to expand their existing recycling programs. Recently, Judy volunteered by helping us update our recycling guide, which allows residents to find out how to best dispose of materials that they no longer need. She has been a tremendous asset for the Master Recycler Program. With all of her experience, she is a great mentor to volunteers that are new to the program. She leads by example and is an inspiration not only to the other volunteers and public, but also to those of us in environmental services. So we want to congratulate Judy, and sorry she can't be here today.
So the next category is the Mary Peiremine Outstanding Volunteer Group Award. This award is in honor of the late Mary Peiremine, who served as commissioner for Marion County from 1991 to 1998. In addition to being the first woman commissioner, she was also a champion of volunteers and volunteer groups. This award is intended for those county-affiliated groups with membership that consists of volunteers. Before presenting the winner of this category, we have a few honorable mention groups to recognize. If you are here today as a volunteer with the Marion County New Solutions Program, please stand and be recognized. So we have any new solutions, people? The New Solutions Child and Adolescent Mentoring Program volunteers work with youth who have intensive mental health needs and are struggling to maintain in our community. The volunteer mentors work one-on-one with the youth in the community and participate in treatment team meetings for their mentee. Mentors help them try new things, meet youth their own age, build self-esteem, and meet their own individual goals. Volunteer mentors are an invaluable aspect of this program and benefit the youth greatly. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Another honorable mention volunteer group we'd like to recognize is the Corbin University REACH Program led by Valerie Gere. Would the representatives please come forward? Corbin's desire is to infuse students both with knowledge and a passion to serve. As they train students to use their minds powerfully, they are challenged to use their hands willingly. Corbin University's REACH Program works in partnership with the Marion County Dog Shelter. Every year, these students dedicate 25 hours of their time to work with our dogs by walking them, training them, reading to them, and socializing with them. This exposure is vital to our dogs and finding them that perfect home. Currently, there are approximately 40 active students in the REACH Program. Our shelter values each student and the time they give.
Our final honorable mention volunteer group in this category is the Consumer Care Partnership. Will anyone here representing that group please come forward? Anyone from Consumer Care Partnership? Consumer Care Partnership facilitators use their life experiences to encourage individuals that struggle with mental health issues to identify their strengths and explore their needs. In this process, people try to work on things that they want to work on to improve their quality of life. The range of activities can stretch from studying, to getting a GED, to taking the necessary steps to get vocational trainings, to overcoming the barriers to get out into the community on a regular basis. It is essential for our facilitators to use their understanding and their own recovery process to walk alongside of others who can be isolated and fearful about participating in the community. Our facilitators learn to use their strengths to overcome personal barriers and use the principles of peer support and recovery to work through challenges. Facilitators put in over 1,500 hours this past year for this program. Thank you, Consumer Care Partnership facilitators, for your service.
This year, the volunteers of the OSU, Oregon State University Extension Service Master Gardeners Program are the recipients of the Mary Peiremine Outstanding Volunteer Group Award. Could all of the representatives come forward? Could all of the representatives come forward? Marion County Master Gardeners are volunteer members of the OSU Extension Service trained to provide home garden information. Volunteers participate in a 12-week training course which covers a wide range of horticulture topics, including basic botany, soils and plant nutrition, plant identification, culture of small fruit, tree fruit, vegetables, et cetera, as well as pesticide safety, integrated pest management, and plant problem diagnosis. Volunteers assist residents with home garden problems in the Marion County Extension Office, but also provide a wide array of other services to the public. The Master Gardeners Service, Master Gardeners, serve as consultants for area community gardens, host clinics in a variety of venues throughout the county, provide horticulture education and youth correctional facilities, sponsor a speakers bureau to provide Master Gardeners to lecture to area organizations, and have a radio program on KBZY 1490 radio. In addition, they have their own 1.75-acre demonstration garden behind the Extension Office on Center Street, in which they offer regular workshops for the public. OSU Master Gardeners in Marion County volunteered a total of 11,765 hours in 2013. They also staffed the Home Gardener Helpline in the Extension Office throughout the year and in 2013 served 1,892 clients. Thank you, Master Gardeners, for your service.
And this is a perpetual plaque, right Kathy, that you have your name on that will hang in the board office, so you'll know it's there. And we'll be keeping it. It says, "OSU Extension Master Gardeners 2013" on it. So next we have the Judge Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award. The late Rex Hartley served as a county judge and commissioner for Marion County from 1951 to 1966. Judge Hartley was dedicated to involving citizens in the development of the county. We'd like to recognize an individual for honorable mention in this category. Paul Guthrie, will you please come forward? Is Paul here? Paul is an extremely active volunteer who has devoted hundreds of hours to the Amateur Radio Emergency Services Program, Community Emergency Response Team, and Medical Reserve Corps. If an emergency should occur, Paul's leadership will help Marion County with disaster preparedness. This year, Paul has taught hundreds of community members about disaster preparedness, amateur radio operations, and medical first aid. Paul Guthrie is a true leader in the emergency management field.
The volunteer receiving the Judge Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award is given an engraved plaque and his or her name is added to the perpetual plaque displayed in the commissioner's reception area. This year's Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award recipient is Patrick Vance. Come on up, Patrick. So just stay here. Got lots to say. Patrick Vance has served in a variety of capacities as a volunteer with Marion County over the past 15 years. He has served on the Health Advisory Board and is the current chairperson. In this role, Patrick has been active on innumerable subcommittees and has participated in many community forums and panels. He is helping to shape healthcare delivery in our community. Mr. Vance has been an invaluable citizen member and chairperson of the Budget Committee for the past 13 years. The citizens of Marion County and the county as a whole have benefited greatly from your immense background knowledge in the intricate details of our Marion County budget process. At the end of the budget process, they recommend a final, the budget committee recommends a final budget to the Board of Commissioners for formal adoption. Patrick has also previously served on the Sheriff's Citizen Advisory Committee. He has demonstrated a high level of personal integrity and ethics. He is able to think strategically and focus on core issues, listens and communicates well while being enthusiastic and good-humored. As the Oregon Department of Corrections Health Services Administrator, Patrick has played a significant role with many services provided by the Parole and Probation Division of the Marion County Sheriff's Office and the Marion County Reentry Initiative. This project allows for inmates to transition from incarceration to the community with the needed medication to facilitate successful reentry. He has also participated in the Sheriff's Office ORS 144 program. The program design includes wraparound services, treatment, mentoring, employment, skill-building, transition coordination, which facilitates transition for the program participants, giving them the skills they need to be successful in our community and lower recidivism in Marion County. Patrick's nomination reads that, "Mr. Vance has a long history of active participation in different facets of Marion County government and sets a good example of government by the people, for the people." So thank you so much personally for everything you've done for Marion County.
Thank you.
The county would also like to thank the volunteers of CCTV who film the Commissioner's Board sessions each week. Can you all come out from behind the curtain? We want to thank and recognize these dedicated volunteers who spend their Wednesday mornings behind the cameras making sure the public has access to the work of county government. Would Richard Gallagher, Ed Freidel, Mark Hernandez, and Joe Fabry come out for a moment? And here they are. Thank you so much.
We'd like to end with congratulations to all the award recipients, but thank you so much to every single person who volunteers in some way, shape, or form, because I can tell you, without this volunteer help, and Kathy went over the outstanding, amazing statistics a little earlier, we can't do what we do without all the help of the volunteers. So thank you very much. So we'll just sit tight here for a moment while our fantastic volunteers leave and go off to do great things. So I'm going to have to ask if we need to resume our meeting. So if you'd like to have some conversations, if you could, please take them outside. We'll get back to our agenda. That was really, really fun. It's always a highlight of the year, but now we have to get back to more serious business. So, public comment is next on the agenda. No one has signed up for that. Just a reminder that if there's anything you want to share with the commissioners and the public, this is your opportunity to come at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday mornings and come and talk to the commissioners and the public about what's on your mind. Next is the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I would move to today's consent calendar. We have several items. First item is Business Services Human Resources. Approve an order appointing Kristen Peterson as a voting member to the Health Insurance Study Committee. Under Health, approve an interdepartmental agreement for $180,001 for the Sheriff's Office to provide mobile crisis response services for the Health Department. Under Public Works, approve a five-year agreement for $511,517 with SCS engineers to provide environmental monitoring and reporting for the North Marion County Disposal Facility and the Browns Island Demolition Landfill. Notification of bid award of $147,400 to Oregon Cascade Plumbing and Heating, Inc., for the replacement of rooftop air conditioning units on Building One at the Public Works campus. Under Public Works Planning, receive Planning Commission's decision dismissing subdivision case number SUB-13-001 Lancaster Duplexes LLC, Clerk's File 5682. And under Tax Collector, approve an order authorizing a property tax refund in the amount of $30,310 to John Co Investments, the first LLC.
And you made the motion. I'll second it. Any comments or questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is passed. Action items this morning, first in the Assessor's Office, is to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2014/2015 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, known as CAFSA, the grant, CAFSA grant, in the amount of $6,41,591. And we have here this morning our assessor, Tom Rolfe, and Leslie Box. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Morning, Commissioners. Leslie Box and I are here this morning to present the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant, or CAFSA, for your consideration and approval. This grant was created in the 1989 legislature to mitigate statewide deterioration of the property tax system caused by a variety of factors at times, including sometimes a lack of local funding. The CAFSA grant adds funding to help maintain a healthy property tax assessment system at the county level. The Oregon Department of Revenue uses the grant application to allocate to each county a share of the total statewide CAFSA funding based on the budgets of all counties. The application requests information about our workloads, staffing, budgeted expenditures, including capital projects, and various components of the Assessment and Taxation Program. This includes the Assessor's Office, the Tax Office, the Board of Property Tax Appeals through the Clerk's Office, Assessment and Taxation Support by IT, and the distribution through the County Treasurer's Office. The funds available from a percentage of interest collected on delinquent property taxes, as well as from a fee on most documents recorded in the county clerk's office. The county treasurer keeps the money intended for the CAFSA in a fund referred to as the County Assessment and Taxation Fund, CATF. At the end of each quarter, the county treasurer transfers monies, including interest earned on the account from the CATF to the Department of Revenue's CAFSA account with the state treasurer's office. The distribution of the proportional grant funds from the state to the county's general fund occurs around the 10th day of the month following the end of the fiscal quarter. Each year, the Department of Revenue looks at market conditions and forecasts the amount that will be deposited into the CAFSA account in the following fiscal year. By June 15th of each year, the department sends a letter to each county giving an estimate of the amount of the, that the county will receive. This amount is based on the county's percentage and forecasted amounts. The total CAFSA funds to be distributed statewide in the fiscal year 2014/15 are projected to be $19,500,000, a 1% increase from the expected fiscal year 13, 1% decrease from the expected fiscal year 2013/14, distribution of $19,700,000. The certified grant expenditures for Marion County for fiscal year 14/15 are, as you said, $6,41,591. The actual grant revenue to Marion County is estimated at $1,281,389, or a 21.21% of the expenditure. Are there any questions?
Now, we, as you mentioned, we've been doing this for many, many years, and of course, every year we have this in front of us, and often it's, it has been a difficult process trying to figure it all out and make ends meet. You touched on, and I, would you, I want you to repeat.
Sure.
It's such a small increase, the difference again, and what does, can you talk a little bit about what it really means for your office and how you can do business and the assistance this provides, or?
Oh, well, our revenue is from the county, from the Board's general fund, and this money goes to the general fund to offset some of the expenditures of the Assessment and Taxation System.
Microphone a little bit closer.
A little closer? Okay. It goes to offset some of the costs of the Assessment and Taxation System, so, including not just the assessment and the collections, but also the other infrastructure that goes into it, so, the support and the distribution through the treasurer's office.
So with the decrease, what it is, so what's that going to mean then to your overall budget?
Well, you know, actually, I think we're doing okay on our budget this year. It's very little change. We've asked actually for a little bit less this year, a little decrease from prior year's budget. And this is, like I said, is 1% different from last year, so, so we're doing okay.
Yeah, a few questions and comments. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. I always enjoy taking a look at it because it gives, it's a very nice overview of what the Assessor's Office does, and as we were just discussing, I think it used to be that this was quite a sizable portion of assessment budgets, and it's just gone down over the years. And yet, the Department of Revenue acts as if, you know, that they're in charge of the whole budget with that small proportion that they provide. So it really was designed, I think, to make sure that each county had the resources allocated appropriately so that they could actually assess and collect the taxes that are needed not only to run our county's programs, but to run all of the programs throughout the county that are funded with property tax dollars, whether it be school districts or fire districts or other special districts, or cities, also, we don't want to leave them out. So it does look like in this particular report, your FTE has gone down just slightly, what you're talking about, and this does, oh, the other thing I was going to say is that this always precedes our budget process a little bit, and there have been discussions in past years about whether or not you could actually alter this report if the budget process changed it at all, and now we know it's not written in stone, it's kind of a floor, and we can, we can work from there. So I've appreciated working with the Department of Revenue on that. My question comes for the tax collection distribution work activity. So it looks like all of these statistics are estimated to go up. I was just curious, when you pick out like the number of foreclosure accounts going up slightly and the number of bankruptcies going up slightly, is this just a factor that you put in based on the numbers of people or numbers of property? Do you really anticipate that foreclosures and bankruptcies are increasing over what they've been with the economy the way that it's been? So, just trying to understand the statistics and whether they're a reflection of economic factors or whether they're just simply on a workload factor saying, well, we're giving it a three they're just simply on a workload factor saying, well, we're giving it a 3% increase or whatever, based on?
Foreclosures and bankruptcies are very difficult for us to predict. So, it's our best estimate.
Well, all of these statistics go up, but did they just, did you just put a factor in and just increase them, or is each one considered individually, or how do you come up with the numbers that you estimate?
I think the numbers are trended through the tax collection office. However, they're the ones that provide the numbers. So, I'm sorry to say, I can't really answer your question.
Okay.
But I believe that they do trend the numbers based on previous years and factor in, of course, the current economy.
Right. So, if they went up 2% to 3% in the last three or four years, then you just have them go up 2% to 3% this year?
Generally, that's, that's how they would calculate them, yes.
But no special insights in terms of how any of these things might play in the future?
Unfortunately, not. With most of our job, we're looking back at what happened in the past, right, for evaluations, including the assessment dates being prior year's January 1st.
Most of these numbers are unfortunately predictions for the remainder of the current fiscal year as well as in the next. So, it's just basically a best guess by the current information that we have.
Okay. And Leslie, when you say that they, they, are you referring to the Department of Revenue? When you said they, these are estimates and numbers they provide?
They're provided by the tax office staff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to clarify that so the viewers can follow the discussion.
So, here at the county.
Yes. These numbers are, when I get the application, the sections that are specific to this information provide these numbers. So, I compile them into the report, but I unfortunately don't know how they derive many of these numbers. I have worked a little bit more closely with them this year. And so, I have had some input and have a little bit better understanding. But a lot of these numbers are just individual sections provide them to me.
Say, when we have the viewers to follow the conversation, who they is?
Yes.
Just keep it, our folks here.
Right.
It's their job to follow these trends and provide the information that's used.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I don't. So, I'd already make a motion. So, Madam Chair, I would move that the board approve the resolution which approves the fiscal year 2014-15 CAFSA grant in the amount of $6,41,591.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's passed. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Community Services. Consider approval of an order waiving a security deposit for election costs for a petition to initiate formation of the Marion County Extension and 4-H Service District. So, we have Tammy, we have Derek, we have lots. So, as, Tammy, or however you want to do it, introduce yourselves so our viewers know who you are.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm Tamara Gatch, Director of Community Services.
John Burt, retired OSU Extension Service.
Kara Fisher, a member of the Citizens Marion County Extension Group.
And Derek Godwin, Regional Administrator with OSU Extension Service.
So, Madam Chair, this morning, we have three items before you, of which was read in the opening. We have a letter that we have prepared for your review and approval. It does have Chair Commissioner Sam Brentano's signature on that. We also have the final feasibility study, and then the security, waiving of the security deposit proposal. Derek, would you like to introduce the letter and the, talk a little bit about those two items?
Sure. So, first with the feasibility study, as we've been, as you've been following along, feasibility study is required for this prospective petition and the move forward. And it covers the main areas of description of services and functions to be performed or provided by the proposed district. So, in that, it gets the background and the issues surrounding this proposal. And then the second part is it, the second part is the analysis of the relationships between services and functions and other existing or needed government services. And then the third component that's required is the first-line item operating budget and projected three-year line item operating budget for the new district that demonstrates its economic feasibility. So, within that, there's several sections, you know, essentially, it provides you with the case, you know, the situation and the proposal, and then how those funds would be used. The second part of this is, within the feasibility statement is a specific position that is of special interest to the city of Salem. And they wanted some, Mayor Peterson wanted some clarity. In the feasibility statement, it's called a Small Farms Community Food Systems position. And so, with that, with your leadership, we drafted up a letter from the Board of Commissioners that provides a little bit more information about that and how that, even though it's a county-based position, how it would serve and benefit Salem. And I just wanted to point out that John Burt was actually our Small Farms agent that had a similar position back before Small Farms was cool. So, he can explain about that.
Good morning, Commissioners. With that segue, I'm not quite sure how to do that, but we have had Small Farms programs in this area going back some years in the Mid Valley. And we have programs offered in surrounding counties. So, it's not without some history and perspective and success. There's a substantial audience that are the small acreage farms who, some are quite fully commercial in terms of their full-time employment, direct marketing directly off the farm, and also through farmers' markets, a variety of ways, and directly to food outlets, restaurants included, as well as grocers, directly from our surrounding farmland. So, an educational program around that is not unprecedented, but it is desirable, and it is in big demand. So, there are some support efforts from the university in that area that will back up this position. And there's a proven track record of success in working with growers to increase the numbers and types of products that are offered, improve their marketing capabilities, as well as, you know, enhance some of the existing outlets like the Farmers Market. So, that kind of a program is, fits right into the direction the city of Salem is going with the economic development plans, and they include agriculture in there. And certainly, for urban population, direct marketing and direct contact to local growers and food producers is really a growing segment of the market right now. It's growing bigger than any other segment of the food production market. So, it makes a lot of sense to have this. And this position, I think, would be quite successful, based on past history and what we've done with that. So, that's my take on it.
So, thank you, John, and Derek. It might be useful for us to put this in context because you're in a process right now, right? So, I think it was late January that you came before the board to ask us to pass a resolution. The resolution said that we would offer you appropriate guidance in this process to move forward, to eventually put something on the ballot. I believe your target date is May 2015, for the voters to create this district of 4-H. You know, it's OSU, it's got a bunch of words in it. It's like everything that OSU Extension does, district. And so then, so then, within that, at this juncture of the process, you've got several things that have to be done. And just to back up to, the Board of Commissioners would actually serve as the board of this new district, which is why you're coming to us and talking to us. So, in this process, you have to get the concurrence of the various cities in writing, correct, in order for them to agree to be, their geographic boundaries to be within this district. And the discussions you had with the city of Salem about this particular position were regarding their agreement to be part of the district. Then you have this feasibility statement, and this is actually a real question, it'd be helpful to remind the board, me in particular. I know it's required. Where does it go? I mean, does it just, do you just present it to us and we stick it in the file with everything else? Does it, does it go out to the public in any way when you're providing them information, this feasibility study? Or kind of where does it sit in the legal process, I guess, of moving forward with this district?
Sure. I'll look over at Gloria in case she wants to explain. As I understand it, it's part of the prospective petition that gets filed here soon, as soon as the two petitioners come forward to do that.
So, it actually literally gets attached to the petition, this entire feasibility study? And did we talk about, is there an executive summary that you're going to have to the study, or did we talk about that, or?
I don't remember that.
Okay. All right. Because it's kind of long, so just.
At this point, at this point in time, we haven't had that discussion, but we opened that up for review prior to submitting that. I think that would be an easy addition to make.
If we approve it today in its entirety, is it too late to add an executive summary? Or would it have to come back before the board, or?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners is not required to approve the feasibility study because it's the citizens group that has prepared it, and it will be filed with the petition, so it will be publicly available. The, if the district is formed, then the Board of Commissioners would take that into consideration in your guidance as to this is what was approved by the voters. And so, that would perhaps lead some of your initial decisions as the district gets started up. It is intended to be a county service district. So, as you say, the Board of Commissioners would be the governing body of that district. It'd be similar to what we have with the other county service districts, East Salem Service District, Farm, no, Chain Service Districts, Brooks Community Service District, LeBeuge, Ille. So, it's that other kind of a district. So, the only thing that is an action item for the board is consideration of the letter that has been requested to come from the Chair of the Board of Commissioners, as well as the order to waive the deposit fees.
Okay. And this is what I wanted to clarify, too. What I read in introducing this, our action today, the question is to approve an order waiving the security deposit for election costs for a petition to initiate. In our materials here is this letter, which we had had some discussion about conversations with the city of Salem, their questions, their concerns. And so, we talked about a letter to the city. Our action today has nothing to do with this letter.
It does not, as you state, Madam Chair, it was discussed at management update and directed to bring back a proposed draft letter to the board. If you wanted, as a board, to approve that letter and for the chair to sign, you could make a motion to add that as an action, a separate action item, or you could just give direction to staff to present it to the chair.
If I could, Madam Chair, we don't often approve letters. I mean, we just put the letters out. If we need to have adjustments made to the letters, we can shop it around the office.
And that's my thought, as we all know, we've been very busy moving our offices. We had talked about doing a letter to the city, specifically to the mayor, to share with the city, to address some of the issues, concerns that they had raised. We haven't really had a chance to say yes, this letter, among ourselves. We've not been able to say, the letter's right on, this is good to go. Nor, as Commissioner Carlson just said, we don't usually take action on a letter. And this would be some, and too, unfortunately, Commissioner Brentano is not here. He is off on official business today. To be part of this discussion on a letter that he's signing, so I, my preference is that the letter not be a part of our motion today or our action today. I don't want to complicate this issue. This is a very, very important and critical step. And I want the public to understand very clearly what this action is. And so, to keep the letter, which doesn't need action separate, I think would be helpful in that discussion.
And looking at my calendar, I think that they would like to bring the letter with them next Monday, so we have some time during the remaining week. Tammy can work with us and make sure that we've got the letter. Is Commissioner Brentano back by the end of the week? Do we know to sign the letter?
I don't know.
Yeah. Back Monday. So, we would actually not be able to sign it until Monday. And do we?
And you wanted to have it Monday evening, Monday during?
Yeah, so we'll be able to.
Yeah, so I think that will work out just fine. We'll be able to do that in the meantime.
So, Linda Norris had, they had been putting together a packet for the councilors for that evening, and their deadline to get that in is today.
Right. But what we discussed is that you can just let them know that a letter will be coming.
Okay.
That happens all the time.
Yeah. They can receive the letter on Monday at their meeting.
Right. They'll be more than pleased to get it on Monday, I'm sure.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, back to, I think that's where Commissioner Carlson was going, the issue at hand. And I do want to have some discussion on it so people clearly understand what this means to everyone. So, I don't know who wants to, and if I could, just kind of going through the chronology now, so you're at a place, it would be nice to hear this petition that this feasibility study will be attached to, when you would like to file that, and then kind of back up to, you know, why we have this action before us today. That would be useful for us.
Commissioners, the process that started probably two years ago to get this ball rolling, conversations, talking to citizens groups, talking to the Board of Commissioners about a way to move this forward and create a district, and eventually provide a tax base for an extension district in this county, has now reached a fairly critical point. If we're looking at a May of 2015 election, we are, upon May of 2014, early in May is the filing point to begin a process of 180 days to collect petition signatures on petitions, which would be due, I don't know the exact date, but in November of this year, which would then create a 180-day window until the election. Those are points in time that are governed by state law as to how this all gets on a ballot. So, we are coming fast upon that time that we need to file the petition with the county clerk's office, goes through an approval process. And once it's approved, then we have a petition that we can take out to the public for signatures. So, that is where we find ourselves right now. Many things are happening. There's 20 incorporated cities in Marion County that are going to be asked to be, to make a decision to be included within the service district, seat of Salem being one of the major ones, that would be a significant portion of the district. And efforts are underway to make all those contacts, to get in front of those city councils, to have volunteer citizens in front of them asking for their support and inclusion. We also begun fundraising activities because the campaign and the whole process requires funds to make it happen. That has started and underway. It's a little difficult because at this stage of the game, until the petition is accepted for a ballot in November, we cannot form a political action committee. And so, those people that were asking to make a donation, it's not tax deductible at the present. So, that, as you may well be aware, are severe aware, it makes fundraising a little more difficult. So, all of those steps are underway. And we are at a critical juncture now where we are filing the petition with the language on it that we've referenced here. This is a limit, and it's been worked over many times by many people to file that petition. And the information that goes along with it, such as the feasibility study, and that process is underway. So, we've come to this critical juncture now where the filing of the petition requires a security deposit at the county clerk's office, I guess. And with, I don't know the exact amount, but I think we've hit the maximum, and that would be a $10,000 deposit. And quite frankly, the citizens from Marion County Extension have not raised that amount of money yet. So, we're at a point where we've asked for your help in the past, in the not-so-distant past, in January, with the resolution to support this. And now, we've come to you, and we've asked for your help again, to help us move this process forward, get the ball rolling, get the petition filed, so that we can begin the petition signing, signature gathering process, and get towards our November deadline, and get this measure on the ballot. So, we're seeking your support and your help in this case, and to take the action in this opportunity here, to take the action to move this process forward, and related to this filing fee. filing fee.
A question. I think it's more for Gloria than for the group. So when we had a discussion about this at management update a week ago Monday, we talked about crafting the petition so that it was kind of a petition or order, petition or order. And I'm seeing it just has petition here. So I'm wondering kind of what happened between a week ago Monday and today. I'm sorry I didn't look at this more closely before now.
That, Commissioner, is a different part of the process. That was the resolution, a proposed resolution for the city if the city wanted to concur and to agree to be part of the district.
That would come, that what Commissioner Carlson is raising would come later.
That would be presented to each individual city and each individual city would have to act on it. But, so you didn't have to go back to the cities twice? And there's two different ways to form a district, by citizen petition or by direct referral of the Board of Commissioners. The direction was to craft a joint resolution for cities to consider, so you'd only have to do once if the board decided later to consider referring it directly. The waiving of the security deposit only relates to the process where it's filed by petition because there is no security deposit if it's referred by the Board of Commissioners. If the district is not formed, and the basis of a security deposit, if the district is not formed, then you go to the security deposit to cover the election cost. And if there's excess cost, then the chief petitioners bear the cost of that election if it's not successful. If it's not successful and the board has referred it, then the county assumes those costs because they're the ones who referred the measure. If it is successful, whether it's by petition or by referral of the Board of Commissioners, then those costs come from the initial budget of the district when it's formed. And that's spelt out in, part of the feasibility study would cover those kind of financial aspects.
So, I was just going to comment that the direction from the board has been clear that we want the citizens of Marion County Extension, I think, to go out and work on petition gathering. That was something that was done in Polk County. It's a grassroots effort. It allows people to come face to face with the voters. It's a good process to go through. The number, however, required for Polk County, John, was.
About 8,000.
And the number required for Marion County is?
About 20,000.
Right. So I mean, it's a huge number of signatures and a fairly short timeline. So wanting to keep our options open if we should head towards summer and we find that the group has made a good faith effort, but you know, you're falling short, we want to keep that option open, I think, so that we don't, so that we don't delay it. So that's why I'm kind of making sure that the words in this don't close doors for us later on if we need to go in a different direction.
I wanted to back up. John talked a little bit about basically the problems in the system that really have compelled you to come and ask for this waiver. I followed what John said. I wondered, Gloria, I'm looking to you, if you could talk a little bit more about that. The process again, the system really isn't conducive to making, to giving the ability to individuals, organizations seeking to get a petition out there. It makes it very, a real steep financial challenge. So can you speak to that a little bit more and walk through that again? Yeah, the system is out of whack. It's a backwards system that makes this difficult and why we're here today.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, this requirement comes out of the special district formation statutes. So it's only for initiative petitions to form a new special district. And because that's creating a new unit of government, there's more requirements than, for example, an initiative petition for a proposed ordinance or something like that. You don't have the security deposit, you don't have the financial feasibility study that's required. But because you're creating a new unit of government, there are these additional requirements. And these special district statutes are, they're a little, they haven't been updated in many years, let's put it that way. And it requires the petition to be sponsored by one to three chief petitioners. And it says that those chief petitioners shall be liable for the election cost. So it's a big inhibition to someone stepping up, especially when you're looking at a countywide election that could cost between, I think the clerk has said, estimated $20,000 to $50,000. The last proposed formation of the Salem Library District, I think it was over $20,000 in costs for that. So it's, you can't, you can't file it unless you have either submitted a security deposit or had it waived by the Board of Commissioners. You're still liable for the cost, but it's just a matter of the upfront cost, the upfront deposit that you have to raise. But you can't, it's not tax deductible until it becomes a measure. So it does create a real barrier for district formation or proposals to form districts.
And it, yes, so thank you for that explanation. And one of the key points in there too, at least for me, is these requirements are specific to only the creation of special districts. This requirement is not out there for other initiative petition efforts. So it makes, it makes this more difficult than any other petition. And I think that's an important factor for us to keep in mind, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
It is quite cumbersome when.
It is.
Asking for funds from people.
Well, it's creating more government and so.
I understand.
There needs to be caution there and, you know, I get that. It's important that it be handled very, very carefully and taken very, very seriously. And that's where I want to say right now, I appreciate all your efforts because you are taking this very, very carefully and very seriously. And the enormity of what you're trying to do, you're handling it in the manner and the respect it deserves. So thank you for that. So any?
I just think, I was just going to say the key to all of this is a successful election.
Indeed.
Yes.
Particularly for the chief petitioners.
Exactly. The chief, it's a kind of a leap of faith there, right? But then a lot of hard work to go along with it, so.
Yeah. So any, any other comments you wanted to?
I would just throw out one other thing. In comparison, we talked about the number of counties that have done this. So we have 21 counties that have formed extension service districts now, so it's become more of the norm. And then another one is going up in Jackson County. The larger counties tend to be referred and so in that process, they haven't had to come up with the deposit. In the smaller counties, so we looked at our neighbors in Polk County, how they put this together. In the Polk County, due to the fewer districts, their security deposit was about $1,000. And so it is significantly different, as you mentioned, for a grassroots effort in a larger county like Marion County to go through.
But going back to another aspect of this and it, whether it be a petition or should the county refer it, if the effort fails at the ballot box, if it's a petition, then the petitioners are personally responsible. If the county refers it, then the county, the taxpayers are responsible. Nonetheless, there's a tremendous financial responsibility, so that, I want that to be clear to people as well. And while we're talking about those aspects of this, again, I commend you for the work you've been doing thus far. And it does appear that the effort is moving forward in a very positive manner and now you're at that place of getting these cities to jump on board. I want to express though, I do still feel very strongly that this does need to be a petition. Grassroots, as you're gathering that support, people sign a petition, you know that they're going to be there with you then, and you can gauge better the effort you need to build support than if it's just a referral. So, and the fact that then if it's a referral from the county, that tremendous financial $10,000 burden on the taxpayers doesn't give me much comfort level. So, but mostly, as I just said, with a petition, you know who your supporters are, you know who you have to target, you know the effort that as you go through that process, maybe there's something that needs to be explained better, or maybe there's more information on something that was overlooked. And you're building that support throughout the entire signature gathering process, so you know what you're up against. If it's just going to be on the ballot, you don't know, not as well, anyway. So, and I want to say this is, to me, it's very, very important. Agriculture is our number one industry and extension and 4H and all the programs that you provide and are responsible for contribute to the health and the welfare of our ag community and our economy. So I want to see this succeed, but I want to be sure that it's done very carefully and with a lot of conscious effort to all the aspects and what concerns, what criticisms there may be, so you can address them. So, with that said.
Yes. And I just want to add, thank you for coming and all the work that you've done and all the work that you're going to do. I thought it was great that we, in that volunteer celebration we had this morning, that there were so many programs that were described that are connected with OSU Extension. So it certainly shows how your work is embedded in the community and all of the just outstanding service that your volunteers and your program staff provide. So this will be the next step in the process to move this along. So with that, Madam Chair, I would move approval of the order that waives a security deposit for election costs for a petition to initiate formation of a Marion County Extension and 4H Service District.
And I will second the motion. And again, it does fit nicely today that you're here and lots of volunteer work in this effort, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other comments, questions? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, good. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In touch.
Right. This morning, we do not have any public hearings. I will, where did I put it here? Read the meetings that two or more commissioners will be attending in the next week. Finishing our board session here today, Wednesday, April 9th, at 3:30 PM is the Economic Development Advisory Board meeting at the Chameca Center for Business and Industry, the Job Growers' Boardroom on the third floor. That is 626 High Street. Tomorrow, April 10th, Thursday, 7:30 AM is the Kaiser Marion County Breakfast at Sherry's Restaurant in Kaiser, 4998 River Road North. Also tomorrow, April 10th, at 10 AM is a one-on-one department head official meeting with Sheriff Jason Myers. That will be at Courthouse Square. How about that? 555 Court Street Northeast on the fifth floor in Salem. Monday, April 14th, 8 AM, AOC Governance Legislative Committee and Board Meeting at the Local Government Center, 1201 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And that meeting actually goes from 8 AM to 3 PM. Monday, the 14th, at 9 AM is Management Update at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast, the fifth floor in Salem. Tuesday, April 15th, at 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM is a work session on public works, the stormwater service fees. And that meeting is also at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast on the fifth floor. Also on Tuesday, the 15th, at 11:30 AM is the State of the County presentation that we'll be doing at the Kaiser Civic Center, 930 Chameca Road Northeast in Kaiser. And then on Wednesday, at 9 AM, we will be back here for our board session, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. Oh, and it just sounds kind of neat to say 555 Court Street again.
We did have the rededication ceremony after we met a week ago and it was very nice, very well done. And I have peeked in your office and you have about as many crates as I do to unpack in there. So it's going to take us, it took us a while to move out, it's going to take us a little while to move in, but at least we are back in and moving forward, so that's great.
I didn't have a chance yesterday with the various meetings and appointments. I had to be at Courthouse Square very long, but I did walk in to have a couple of plans and to put there, get them. And the big window with all the fantastic sunshine and wide open spaces and, oh my goodness. Think about where we just moved out of and, hey, you know, it's fine with me. I'm used to working out of the back of my car even. But when I think about the conditions that many, many employees worked in, worked under, cramped little quarters and sometimes dreary kind of environments. And you know what, though? We got the work done, we served the people, yet I want to thank all of our employees for being such good troopers and just keeping spirits up through this whole thing. And now, now surviving the move back in and unpacking all those crates and dusting off all those dirty things that have been in storage for three years or three plus years. But it looks, it looks good and it'll be a great work environment and I think a good asset to cross our fingers. The remediation work will keep that building safe and sound long into the future.
I had the opportunity to go up the elevator with a couple of people from the district attorney's office and they said it felt like Christmas to them. They were very excited to be moving back in.
Talking about dingy, cramped.
They were in the basement of the courthouse and they're very happy to be somewhere else now, so.
So good for them.
So it is good. And lovely weather that we're having, finally got out of the rain, so that is good.
These beautiful plants here today, yeah, it was a fun day. Fun to recognize all the good, hard volunteer work. All right. So we will adjourn then. Thank you for being here.